Call the meeting to order. We'll note that all commissioners are present. The first item of business is the order of business. Are there any changes to the order of business?
Mr. President and Commissioners, I just passed out an item for you that if we could, I'd like to add it to the engineering item. I think it would be 6B.
Okay, under six reports there, or, okay, we'll make it 6B. And this is East Philard Street repair?
Correct. Due to the rain over the weekend, we had some road closures there that I'd like to discuss with you.
Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda? Hearing none. With that addition, would there be a motion to approve the order of business?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say nay. The motion carries. Then we'll move to the consent agenda. Are there any items on the consent agenda you wish to discuss? Hearing none.
I'll move that we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have the motion and the second. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to the non timetable agenda. The first item there has to do with the Family Medical Leave Act. These are causing our ordinances to be amended for our consideration as the second reading and final passage of ordinance 1557. Mr. Kessel, is there anything you'd want to say in way of introduction?
Thank you, President Johnson and Commission. There has been no changes since first reading. And what this ordinance does is it prevents staff, when they're on FMLA leave, from getting secondary employment unless it's approved.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kessel. At this time, we'll ask if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on ordinance 1557. You may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, and we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public that will comment on 1557. Any comments or questions by commission members?
I'd make motion for approval of second reading, final passage of ordinance 1557.
Is there a second?
I will second.
We have the motion and the second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Altman.
Aye.
Mr. Jackson.
Aye.
Mr. Steiner.
Aye.
Mr. Decker.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. The motion carries. We'll go to item B and hear the human resource report by Mrs. Nomenek.
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. The Haring Journal, for this time, we still have one police officer position, actually two, probably two openings. We were in the second interview phase. That's not looking so good. So it looks like we'll have two positions open. We just opened that up, so we'll be taking interviews for a couple of weeks on that. Animal control officer, we've opened that position again, and we'll be doing interviews next week on that position. So that is one full-time position there. We had a senior sanitation operator position open up internally, and that was filled with an internal applicant. Street maintenance operator, we're still kind of struggling with that one. We've got three positions open right now for that. And we just opened the position again. Have one interview left from the last time we had it open. And we will opened it again, and we'll take more applicants. Chief wastewater plant operator, we are in the second interview phase for that. We're bringing an applicant in this week. So we'll be interviewing him for that position. The wastewater plant operator positions have been filled. We had three open positions, and those three have all been filled. We have one water utility operator position. And we are doing interviews this week for that. We hired an administrative assistant in engineering. And that position will start next week. Deputy City Administrator for Finance and Administrative Services has been opened again and are taking applications until next week for that position. Museum Assistant, we just did fill that position, and that individual will start on September 1st. We had a mechanic position open, not a lot of applicants. The first time we opened it, actually just one. And so we opened the position again today, and we'll begin our search again for mechanic. That is a new position. And we had two internal promotional opportunities, a senior property appraiser and a communications specialist, two position that just opened. And we will start interviews on those next week. And then the limited, or the library assistant, it's a limited hours position. We've got three positions for the library that we need to fill. Any questions?
Are you sensing any change in the labor market since last time you reported to us?
Um, not really. We are getting applications, which is good, you know, slowly, but nothing really new.
Was the museum assistant, is that part-time or full-time?
That's full-time. We, um...
You had 80 applicants?
We had, yes. We had lots of applicants for that position.
None of them were qualified to be a mechanic, though?
You know, I tried to throw that in, but, no.
Okay. All right. Anything else, Mr. Kessel?
President Johnson, if I could, I just had a good meeting with Police Chief Dossinger, and I just wanted to add that we actually will have three police department openings, police officer openings. We've lost one to Oregon and two to Minnesota. They've returned to their roots. That's where they were from, both Oregon and Minnesota. Only one of them is taking a PD position with the city of St. Paul. The other two are leaving without employment and have stated reasons such as can't find daycare in town as their rationale. They truly didn't want to leave and were emotional about their departure, but simply couldn't, in their mind, make it in our economy. So I just wanted to add that, that there are actually three. And they are going to lose another officer to deployment to Afghanistan. So they'll actually be down four come October or November, assuming there are no hires between now and then. So I've told Chief Dossinger not to tell you guys he's fully staffed anymore at a city commission meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kessel, we'll hear your reports.
Thank you.
Whoops, thank you, President Johnson and Commission. I'm having technical difficulties, so I don't have access to the map that you have access to. Oh, thank you. So what I'll do is try to use maybe the map up here for the public. But you should have in front of you the extraterritorial zoning map. It does have our existing extraterritorial zoning in red. And then in green, it has our proposed. And I did present this map to the Stark County Commission and reviewed it with them. You'll notice a couple of things with regard to the map. We have taken advantage of two miles in several locations on the map, but not all. We are legislatively authorized via our population to go up to two miles. Once we can independently verify a population of 25,000, we could actually get an additional two miles for a total of four. But we would have to take a special census or something of that variety before we can access the four. So the areas that we've taken, the two miles, are predominantly on the south side of the community, on the west side of the community, and on the northwest side of the community. We have not taken the full two miles on the northeast side of the community. We do have where Sundance Village and Sundance Coves are. The current conditions are our city limits actually touch our extraterritorial zoning in that location on the northeast corner. We will bump that out a section so that those don't touch. But you can see that we're far from a mile or even the full two miles that we could access. We did bring up, you'll notice, another anomaly on the north and the south side of the community that exists today, where we go around on the south side of two existing developments. When I presented this to the Stark County Commission, they, in fact, their staff members would like us to square that off and not do the southern, on the north side, to go around the existing developments. They would like us to just include that development and make it square. And same for the south side. They felt like that would be easier for their purposes. We've had some internal discussions, and I'll certainly let Community Development Director Cortan weigh in on that. I think his position or opinion differs. So I'll yield the floor to him for a moment.
Mr. President, Commission, with respect to Commissioner Kessel, we did talk about it in-house. Personally, I feel, and I think it's consensus with the executive staff, that splitting or segregating a subdivision is confusing for the property owners, especially when you have one house that may be within the extraterritorial zone and the next one adjacent to it would be outside. You would have that confusing factor of county regulations and also city regulations. I think that it makes the most sense to not segregate subdivisions just for that issue. And then along with issues of building permits, with who has the ability to have certain jurisdiction over certain matters, and then also different departments that may be involved. I find that very confusing if you were doing it that way. And it would cause potentially some headaches where normally an applicant would presume that if their neighbor is in one community, that they should be in the same community. And I could see that that would be a potential problem in the future. So I would strongly recommend that we would either take in a whole subdivision or an area that's developed, or just completely bypass that just for the consistency and continuity with respect to that.
So recognizing Mr. Cortan's opinion, the map reflects that opinion. We continue to not subdivide an existing subdivision on the north and south side. I'd also like to point out that we do anticipate annexing the wastewater treatment facility at some point in the future. When that happens, that we could also extend the extraterritorial boundary if we chose on the southeast side of the community. As you are aware, we are studying the west side of Dickinson, the West Dickinson Plan. And we might have some recommendations that come from that plan creation. And, but that's, that plan won't be completed until later this year, probably November, December timeframe. So I just wanted to mention that as, and the wastewater reclamation facility as potentials to change the extraterritorial zoning map down the road. What we'd like to do is hear your opinions on the map. If the map as it is presented with the green boundaries, we would, if that's, assuming that's okay with the city commission, we would present that in the form of a motion so you could take action at the next city commission meeting. Or a resolution.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. Mr. Cortan, is there any reaction by commissioners to this report?
Mr. President, I, you know, I agree that we should extend our ETZ to the west, northwest as allowed by state law. And I'm fine with not exercising all our authority to the northeast. To me, that makes sense. We can do it later if we have to. But I think, are you saying, Mr. Kessel, we're not going to try to do anything with this resolution tonight?
Commissioner Jackson, that's correct. It's actually listed under reports for this evening, not for an agenda item. You certainly can change that at your desire, but...
Okay. Well, the reason I ask that is that the lines don't make sense here. The green line is more than two miles in a number of locations here. So I think somebody needs to take a look at that again. Unless the city limits line shown here is in error, something is not right here.
Are you talking on this, kind of the southwest side of town, by the...
The whole, the green, all of the green line on the west is, needs some review.
Does each square represent a mile?
Half mile.
Half mile.
It's a quarter section.
Each inch is 5,000 feet. So those are less than an inch.
Yeah. I don't know that that's scale.
I think two squares should equal one mile.
Two squares equal a mile?
Yeah.
Okay.
So philosophically, with what we're proposing, I think it's great. I think we should do that. But I think you just need to fine tune the lines on here. And I think we have a couple of pending annexations. I don't know how fast those are going to occur, and that could change things again. But I don't think we should wait too long to do this.
Would you like us to wait until those annexations are complete and see if they affect these boundaries? Or move forward within, a change now, and then change it again in the near future?
I don't, I don't think they're going to affect the boundaries. If they do, it'll be in a real minor way. I don't think they will. Might be one little spot here, but, so I think you should proceed.
Okay.
I'm going to interrupt the discussion. Since we have a 445 timetable agenda item, we'll come back to this when we're complete with the timetable agenda. But at 445, I hope I pronounce the individual's name correctly. We have Lance Yohi. And he's representing the Missouri River Stakeholders Group, and he will be presenting to the commission.
Thank you. Thank you.
Did I get your name right?
Did right on.
Okay.
Algro.
I spelled it wrong. What is a correct spelling?
It's an E at the end instead of an I.
An E.
So it is pronounced Yohi, like you said.
All right. Well, welcome, Ms. Yohi.
Well, I appreciate being able to present to you, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm working right now with a number of groups in North Dakota with a little project that the Water Commission and Garrison are funding. And the idea is to try to gel North Dakota's viewpoint, voice around the Missouri River to get it more organized. And what's happened here is there's a joint board on the Missouri River of Water Resource Districts that's been kind of trying to work on this for a while. Back in 2008, that little conference, and it's just kind of stayed there for a while. Hasn't gotten very far. And then the Water Commission and Garrison put some money into it. So we have Southwest Pipeline involved in this. We have Garrison. We have the Missouri Joint Board. We have State Water Commission. We have Governor's Office. We have Garrison. We have a number of groups like that. And I'm a senior advisor to that group. And then we have Ryan Norrell, who we've hired as an executive director. And him and I are running around talking to local governments, particularly in the western half of the state. Well, all the way to Jamestown, actually. And I've also talked to people in Fargo and up in Minot. So what we're going to do is have a workshop in November, and the date's on the back here, November 20th, at Bismarck. It's a one-day workshop. It's free. We hope some of you folks can be here for that, send your staff, come yourself. And we're going to spend the day talking about what we could do together and try to get everybody agreeing that we need to do something together and what that would start to look like. Get some feedback from people. And then we're trying to take that information and build on it with the idea that next June, on the 3rd and 4th, we'll have a two-day conference at the Ramcota. And we'll try to set up this organization based on the feedback we get in November. And then from that, we'll, like board or whatever we need to do coming out of the November conference, we'll get it set up for June. And then we'll try to create this organization that works on Missouri River issues, brings local government, state government, private government, everybody to the table, and tries to identify what it is North Dakota really needs out of Missouri so that we're not fighting internally, so that when we talk to our U.S. Senators and our Congressmen, we're all saying the same thing. And then so North Dakota can be better positioned to deal with its neighboring states and the federal government. So that's what we're trying to do. So I'll answer any questions you have. That's the nutshell. We hope you come to the conference in November, be part of it, put your voice into it, help us sort this out, figure out where to go. And then next June, we're going to try to organize something. Or we'll link it with something else if that's what people want us to do.
Okay. Are there any comments or questions? Mr. Kessel, we'll begin with you.
I do have a question for you, Mr. Yohi, and I apologize for getting your name incorrectly spelled on the agenda. So are you anticipating that this group, once formed, would take on political decisions or weigh in on decisions such as inter-basin transfers of water, such as, you know, providing water to Fargo and Grand Forks? Or, I'm trying to learn, trying to find your scope when it comes to big decisions like that.
Let me give you a little history from my side of who I am, and that might help get at that. I just retired in January. That's why I'm doing this now. My career was spent doing the same thing that we're trying to do here for the Red River. And so we have an organization there called the Red River Basin Commission. It operates with South Dakota, North Dakota, Minnesota, and Manitoba. We have an office in both countries, and we have a board that's made up of people that the governor puts on, as well as the local county commissioners, the mayors, the water boards, and so forth, in North Dakota. Minnesota does the same. Manitoba does the same. And that is a nonprofit set up to work across boundaries, to try to get people to understand what we need to do in the Red River Basin. So how do we solve the flooding problem in the Red River Basin? That's one of the big issues. You can't do it if North Dakota and Minnesota are doing things that are counterproductive. And you can't do it if North Dakota and Minnesota aren't thinking about what Manitoba needs. So we've worked on those things. So we're not set up to have power or authority. We're set up to carve a path forward. Now, this is an organization that we hope to set up here, a structure that will be inside the state of North Dakota. So it gives you more flexibility on what kind of things you want that organization to do. So there's already discussions, should we have the organization be more of an advocate than we are in the Red River? So it could go in that direction. That's something the new board would decide. And part of the feedback we get from people who come to the workshop in November will help us start to shape what that conference in June looks like as we start to lay out the tasks, the duties, the pilots, the articles, all the things that would go into that. So it could very well be that. My vision is it would be a good link for local and state government to work together. It would be a good link to complement what the Water Commission does at larger levels, bringing stronger voice to the table. So like Ryan, his background is legal. He's an attorney. He was Lamore County Attorney, and then he worked for public service. So it could be, but I don't want to presume that because we're going to elect a board to do that or connect it to some organization that has a board. But I think it's needed. You know, and when you get to the Red River stuff, when you talk about inter-basin transfers, those are legal issues that you're going to go up against the Corps on for taking water out of the Red, out of the Missouri to bring it to the Red. You're going to deal with the state of Missouri and water allocation and western water law. All of those things have to be monitored all the time and worked with. And if we get a common voice for North Dakota, there's a much better chance of us getting our story on the table and winning the battle. Senator Hovind was very fortunate, I think, and good at what he does. But he got a 10-year moratorium from the Corps on charging water for the Missouri. But we better be ready in 10 years because they'll be trying to do it again.
I have another question, if you don't mind. How are you defining the Missouri River? Are you including tributaries, or are you just defining it as the channel itself?
No, we're, that's why I'm here. And I've been, we've been out to Henninger and all over this, all over. We're looking at it as a watershed. So everything west of Jamestown, we're focusing in on first. But we're also trying to get the Lake Agassay Water Authority plugged in. I've already presented to them. I visited with the mayor of Minot. We're going to present to the city council up there. Because if we get water going up there for NOS, we get water going to the Red for Red River Valley water supply, then we better be thinking about how does that all tie together for North Dakota's needs and what we're trying to do with that river. And then inside the state, not only do we have water supply, we have irrigation, we have fish and wildlife interests, we have a lot of competing interests even inside the state that we need to get our arms around.
Okay.
I think Dickinson should be a big player in all this.
Other comments or questions?
Do you have a website?
Yes, there is one just set up. We call ourselves a Missouri, North Dakota Missouri River Stakeholders. And there's a website on that now that we're just fine tuning, but it's up and running. We're adding to it all the time. So you'll all be getting, you probably just got a little flyer, save the date. You probably got it. And you'll probably all getting email invitations to this as we go along.
All right.
So we're, we're here to bring everybody to the table and figure out what to do.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Well, the Missouri River is obviously very important to those of us in the southwest here in Dickinson. It's our water supply source. For many of our residents, it's a primary recreation area. So, and there's, I'm sure, many other reasons, but it probably would serve us well to have both at least one, possibly two commissioners who would be willing to attend this workshop along with appropriate city staff. So, Mr. Kessel, I'd ask you to put this on next meeting's agenda. And in, between now and the next meeting, I'd like commissioners to be considering whether or not you'd be willing to get involved in this. But, you know, it's, it's a very important issue to our city. One other thing, come on up to the mic, then.
In light of that, thank you. There's no charge for the workshop.
Oh, no charge?
You just have to be there.
Okay.
Yeah. So as long as you're going to work in your budget. The conference next year might be a different matter, but we think at the conference, it'll be a lot more involved, and we're trying already to get on the governor's calendar for him to speak.
We were thinking about charging you.
There you go. No, we don't want to have that east...
Oh, we were not going to have that either. Okay.
Thanks a lot.
Thank you for being here. Okay, well, we'll go back to the discussion, and we're only going to have it for about a minute and a half. But other comments on the ETZ report? I think, I think I heard Commissioner Jackson say that he's in favor of acting on this, and if we have to act later due to an annexation or some other issue, that's, that's what he's recommending. If that's his recommendation, I would, I would concur with that. Other comments, though?
Any direction at all related to the existing developments and going around them as we have done in the past? Would you like to continue that practice?
Yeah, I would incur with Cortan that we should do that.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too. If, you know, if Mr. Jackson feels that the map isn't quite accurate, we'd certainly ask you and your staff to recheck the accuracy.
We'll certainly do that. Thank you.
Is there any other feedback?
Mr. President, I guess I have one question. It might not relate. But does the, does the city with our expanding boundaries, are we in discussions with the school board? Because I know the school district butts up right against, you know, and there's some people that are falling into our control, basically, but they're falling into a different school district. And I know they've, I've been contacted, people have tried to enroll their children into our school district, and they can't. And what we're falling under, they're inside our boundary.
Commissioner Decker, I'm glad you asked that question. It's oftentimes an area of misunderstanding out there. As our city boundaries change, the school district boundaries do not. And 50th Street right now is kind of that boundary on the west side of Dickinson city limits. We fully anticipate that we'll, we'll have property into the South Heart School District in the very near future. And... property into the South Heart School District in the very near future. And those properties, assuming they're residential and have school-aged children in them, will be in the school heart, or South Heart School District. And I don't want to put any words in the Dickinson School Districts, but I believe they've closed enrollment, which means that those people who physically live in the city of Dickinson may have to enroll in the South Heart School District. So there are discussions ongoing. We, as a, as a, as a city staff, have encouraged those discussions. We've not been particularly involved in those discussions. We do have them with the developers as well, so that they're well aware of that boundary. So the potential exists that you could have a school, city of Dickinson, school district, grade school, and within sight distance of a South Heart School District itself. So I'm not sure how those will resolve themselves. As you are aware, there's a vote October 7th for a new school in this Dickinson School District, and they're currently slated. If it develops the way we anticipate, there'll be a great many school-aged children living in the city of Dickinson and west of 50th Avenue. So someone is gonna have to take care of those, educate those students, and as of today, it would, it appears that it would be the South Heart School District who would do that.
Other comments or questions? Okay, it's five o'clock. We have five o'clock timetable, the agenda item. There's a public hearing regarding proposed truck route changes. Attorney Coling's not here. Mr. Kessel, are you introducing this item?
There should be a, a map that was available in your, in your packets that outlines where the truck route, as we proposed it, should be. We would like to entertain discussion of that truck route. In the past, we have shied away from actually establishing a physical truck route. What's pressuring us to do so now is the creation of the interim bypass, and also the participation in the truck permitting process. In order to receive permits to drive on allowable roads, we have to sign those roads and make sure that trucks stay on those roads, that they're well-known. So, so before you is the proposed route. We discussed this briefly at a previous city commission meeting, and we'd like to receive your and the public's feedback regarding it. And Engineer Kubis is also well acquainted with this route.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kessel. At this time, we'll declare the public hearing open. Anyone wishing to comment may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments.
Mr. President, commissioners, Jerry Vance, a resident of 8th Street Southeast. I'm here representing myself and, you know, people from the neighborhood. We're kind of concerned about 8th Street Southeast because of some of the issues that we have right now. Basically, the speeds of the vehicles that are driving down it, the conditions of the roads, and some of the noise that is in the area right now. It has become pretty much a racetrack, you know, for some of the motorcycles, four-wheelers. The semis are running up, but right now we've got a large number of the trucks that are hazmat regulated. If you look at the packaging in these vehicles that drive by, if they're involved in an incident, as a tanker, the ERG book says that you have evacuation area of approximately a half mile to mile on most of these. So main concern is the speeds of what we got and how the people in the neighborhood are driving. Just in the last couple of weeks, some of the speeds we've recorded down there has been as high as 72 mile an hour. You know, the average speed is 35 mile an hour. It is a 25 residential, and most of us live on that street, have been there long before that the road down that was built to the north, coming across the bridge, and down by a poor bit of lumber was even there. You know, so we've seen an increase in the traffic, you know, the, the stuff that's there. And most of us are mainly concerned, I don't think you're hearing anybody complain about the number of vehicles, is how they're driving, and what we have to put up with that. So I just wanted to voice our concern with that and make you aware that there is quite a few issues with that in light of what's actually there. The road conditions are so bad now that, you know, our houses shake from these semis come by if they're speeding in excess of that 25 mile an hour. So, you know, one of the things that's been discussed on in our neighborhood is, you know, I don't know if that's feasible, but stop signs. Also, the parking areas, they're, they're passing people on the right side, driving up in the parking areas, they're driving up on our sidewalks, because we have drivable curve in that part of the town. I've had people that U-turns, that they, they're up in the yard, making U-turns, you know, at highway to speed, 30, 35 mile an hour, they're passing people on the right at intersections, almost up into your yards. Had a semi last week, for example, that came by, swerved, must have thought he was gonna hit some of the potholes over in the street. He came by us at probably 35 mile an hour, in the sand and the gravel that was on the street, pretty much like being shot with BB guns, and sand blasted with sand. So, just would like you to be aware of some of the things when you do consider some of this, and see if there's something you could do to help us as, as residents of that neighborhood. And I've had two people in the last couple of weeks tell me I should just pack up and move and leave there. And I, that, that to me is unacceptable, you know, when all the people in the neighborhood have been asking people to do is see that the laws are enforced. The police departments did, you know, as much as they can with the, the number of people that they have and the assets they have available to them. So, but if you look at the MUTCDs, it does, under public safety, allow you to put, like, stop signs. It does allow you to put the markings for the parking areas, some of that. So at least that would be, you know, something that would, you know, maybe help a little bit. And I'm aware that the people are probably not gonna stop, because I'd say 90% of the people are not stopping at the stop signs in the neighborhood, too. Thank you for allowing me to at least voice our concerns, and appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vance. Is there anybody else from the public that would like to comment? Anybody else? There's no one else that wishes to comment, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. Mr. Kubis, is there anything you would like to say about the proposed truck route?
Mr. President, Commissioner, we, we hear comments like Mr. Vance's all over town, and undoubtedly, the, the traffic has increased on 8th Street Southeast. We have looked at it, the city staff, and the engineering department, and with other departments, and we do have a proposed project right now. It's, it's just pencil on paper, but we are looking at prioritizing it with, with dozens of other projects that are much needed throughout the city. But we agree that, you know, the, the condition of the roadway could be better, and, and we're looking at improving it. We have talked with, with PD about doing some, I guess what I'd call alternative traffic control measures, as far as signing and striping, looking at painting, some speed limits on the roadway, to try and reinforce the, the 25 mile an hour speed limit that, as Mr. Vance said, maybe not all the time is, is being adhered to. But as far as the truck route goes, that we have before us today, I, I do think, for good or for bad, it, it is the route that we have right now on the, on the southeast side of town. So we'll, we'll do what we can with the budget we have to improve the roadway conditions, and to try and keep the, the speed limit adhered to. If you have any other questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
The, the change in this route, if I understand this properly, is on Highway 22, that, that section, there's a section of Highway 22 that would no longer be considered part of the truck route. Am I reading this correctly?
Well, the, the red on the map is, is the, I believe, an ordinance that was passed last summer, maybe two summers ago, restricting trucks on Highway 22. Where it became vague is, is how the truck route was actually signed, and, and some of the signing was, was ambiguous as to exactly what streets on the southeast side of town constitute the truck route. And by adoption of this ordinance, we would define that as 8th Street Southeast, 6th Avenue East, and then out to the business loop, heading out to Exit 64 on the east side of town. So Highway 22 will, in, in no cases, except at the very north and south ends of town, be designated as the truck routes. It's not that, and if, I think it's stated in the resolution, it wouldn't prohibit trucks, except for the area marked in red.
Okay.
It would just be, if, if you need to get through town, the blue route will be the designated route.
And that is not a change?
No. The, the red is, is established by prior ordinance.
Okay. Other comments or questions?
Sure. You know, I, I guess I would just echo the concerns brought forth from the community. I've been in contact with several of the other residents that live down there. I realize the concern. Part of adopting this truck route is our ability to establish those rules and regulations that you're looking for, too, and, and for our police department to be able to enforce that. Not having a truck route, not having the signage, has made it, as you said, ambiguous at best, as to how do you get from one part of the town to the other and stay compliant. Adopting this and putting the signage up certainly indicates the correct path, so then it, it gets much more difficult for the offenders to say that they didn't know, because we have the signage, we have the speeds, we have, and then we have the ability for our police force to enforce the truck route and, and to take care of the people that are offending it. So I think this is an important first step towards your concerns, to get where you and your neighbors need to be on that side. Unfortunately, that's where the truck route's going to be, but once we have all the signage and speeds in place, then we can do the enforcement that, that's really, I wouldn't say lacking, but not as strong as it could be without having the established truck route.
Thank you, Mr. Altman. Other comments?
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Kubis. Are the fines for speeding or violating whatever within this truck route, are they set by the city, or does the state set those, or DOT, or?
Commissioner Decker, I guess I'm, I'm not really up on how we assess and levy fines. I know we had some discussion about being in compliance with, with state law, so.
I can answer that.
Go ahead.
Because I was involved in legislation two sessions ago regarding this topic. The, the short answer, Mr. Decker, is most of these fine limits are set by the state sentry code. And two sessions ago, we helped, or there was legislation introduced, really on the city of Dickens' behalf and other communities in western North Dakota, that would give us greater flexibility in setting fines because of the, you know, the Bakken impact. The state legislature, I believe it was two sessions ago, defeated that bill, and probably the most common reason we heard from legislators is because they felt that, you know, whatever the fine was in Fargo for speeding, that should be the same fine that's in Dickinson. Didn't agree with that logic, but that's essentially what we heard. And I, I know, I testified on behalf of that legislation. We had, I think, the whole law enforcement community that supported that, but it, it was soundly defeated, as I recall. Mr. Kessel?
If I could add to that, there was a class action lawsuit that was brought in the city of Grand Forks related to this issue, and the, the concept was, if you're on a road, you could get picked up by a highway patrolman, a sheriff's, or sheriff's deputy, or a city department, and your fine could vary depending upon which entity picked you up. So that's where the class action lawsuit came into play, so that there'd be the, a same fine or similar fine, regardless of the agency in which you were, who caught you, essentially doing the wrong thing. So, that's the backstory.
I was just thinking of options in that residential area. People only tend to learn one of two ways, either money or blood. So.
Well, I wish we had the option.
I wish we had the option also.
To, to increase fines there. You know, it's, it's, it's a different driving environment, different traffic environment in the Bakken versus the non-Bakken areas, and it's primarily due to large vehicles, and, and of course, more congestion, but especially large vehicles. We have a high percentage of large vehicles on our city streets. Other comments?
I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Mr. Kubis, I thought you said that just because a street isn't on the designated truck route doesn't mean a truck can't use that thoroughfare. And specifically, when I looked at this, I thought about westbound traffic on I-94 wanting to use Highway 22. Will trucks be able to use Highway 22? I understand a local delivery is a different thing.
The, the local deliveries are, I think, even written into the ordinance that they're an exception to the, the truck routes. Right now, we're, we're not designating that as a no-truck route, just south of the interstate. So that westbound truck that wants to get north, as this is currently laid out, would be able to go north on Highway 22. The thought being, if in the future, we'd have a northeast bypass, something similar to what we have on the northwest side of town now, I would feel pretty comfortable at that point, making Highway 22 from wherever that point is to the north, all the way to Broadway, as it is now, no trucks on Highway 22. We have a pretty lengthy detour. If, if you have that westbound truck at Exit 61 wanting to get north, they need to go about five miles, or four miles, to, to west and to back to the east. So at this point, no.
I understand and tend to agree. But then, the blue lines really are just encouragement?
Well, as far as enforcement would go, I imagine that is somewhat, you know, judgmental when you're pulling a truck over that's not on one of these designated routes. I suppose there has to be proof of, is it a local delivery or not? I think if we have a tanker truck on any of these non-blue routes, it's a pretty good bet that, that's not a local delivery. But I think Highway 22 is maybe that exception to any of the other local streets that we have here.
Well, what about State's Avenue?
On, on State Avenue, I think we're asking those trucks to go that, you know, to stay off that and, and use the, the blue line, except where State is a part of the truck route. State Avenue north of, of Villard, though, would be, would be, I guess, an exclusionary area. Highway 22, I guess, gets to be a little bit cumbersome, as it's, it's such a, a main route, and there are a lot of companies that would utilize Highway 22 north of the interstate.
Sure, and I, and I think it's not reasonable today to keep trucks off of 22, but I think it's reasonable to keep them off State's Avenue.
Definitely.
Well, we had talked about that. I mean, there's, there's several streets that we would like to keep trucks off of. 21st Street and 10th Avenue East. Right now, I guess, the, the first step in this was designating the truck route, and at a point in the future, we can come back and designate no-trucks-allowed routes, similar to the Highway 22 segment that we had designated before.
Yeah, I think we should work on that as quickly as possible, you know, establishing this truck route, and then going back like we did with Highway 22 and establishing the non-truck streets, too.
Yeah, I just want to make sure I understand this. Based on what this map shows and what this resolution says, if a truck is on State Avenue, we can't find them.
I don't think that's what it's saying. And Police Chief Doster's gonna help us out here, but.
I'm missing something.
But all, all this resolution does is establish or define the truck route. It's, there are ordinances that would, that relate to what happens if you're not, if you're driving a truck on streets other than this route.
Yes. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. By city ordinance, right now, we are authorized to issue $100 citation to trucks on Highway 22 or 3rd Avenue West, basically from south of 12th Street down to Villard. The designated truck route, as you see in blue, are recommended routes. As far as us taking enforcement action on other streets, such as State Avenue, 10th Avenue East, we can only take overload enforcement action on those vehicles right now. There's nothing by city ordinance preventing trucks of legal way to travel on 10th Avenue East or State Avenue. The police department's had discussion with engineering about truck travel on State Avenue and 10th Avenue East, and those are the roadways that we feel should be designated as a no-truck travel as well, except for local deliveries.
Okay. So in your mind, it's important that we establish the truck route prior, so that we have the established pathway, and then we go back through, through ordinance and establish.
That's correct.
Roads that they can't. So, so we're. So we're in the process, we're on the right path.
We want to establish that habit before we start taking enforcement.
Yep.
Okay.
Makes sense.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
There any other comments?
Well, I would just add to what Mr. Altman said. I, now I do understand, and I agree with the strategy, but I think, as soon as we can, we need to look at more red lines.
Definitely.
As soon as we think that's reasonable.
Yeah, I think you have a couple of issues here, the more red lines, and then the blue line itself, making sure that we've made those routes as safe as we can for not only those who are traveling it, but those who live alongside of those routes.
Well, and, and one more, if I could add, there's some of that blue that isn't as sound structurally as, as some of it. So we're going to have to recognize that, too. If we force more truck traffic onto it, we may need to do some work.
I imagine that's a double-edged sword. The more sound you make it, the easier it is to travel fast on it, too. And I'm not advocating that we don't maintain it. I'm just, you know, the better you make the road, the easier it is to drive fast on it. So that would, I think that just complicates it.
Well, it's something we'll take into consideration. Like I said, we do have, on the drawing board, so to speak, 8th Avenue southeast, and actually parts of 8th Avenue south, or, excuse me, 8th Street southeast and 8th Street southwest, the asphalt portions of it. The concrete portion was done back in the eighties with a state project. But there's a good example of the same street that has probably different load-carrying capacities, so.
Okay. Other comments? Okay, this is Resolution 49-2014. Would there be a motion regarding this resolution?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Chair, a second?
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion. Hearing none will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move back down to the non-time table agenda, and we'll move to engineering. And, Mr. Kubus, you, do you have any project updates?
I do, just quickly. I guess last meeting or the meeting before, we went through some capital improvement projects and updating where we were at on some water and sewer projects. I'd like to quickly go through some of the development construction that I'm sure the public has been seeing. Do have a map up behind you. And I don't know that this is all of the active construction, but I think the highlighted areas will cover most of the construction that folks are seeing. So I'll briefly go through with an update that I've gotten from the developer, about where they're at in their infrastructure build-out, and then what most people see is their vertical construction. If they have started that, I guess the update I'm giving you is what I was given by the developer. So I will start with the Buffalo Bend subdivision. This is a small residential subdivision on 10th Avenue East. They've just started grading work here in the last month or so. It's a 12-lot subdivision planned with some single-family and some multifamily housing. Right now, they're looking at eight single-family homes and four twin homes. And their plan is to install their utilities in their streets as soon as possible. Imagine that development will be complete this year. The next subdivision, the construction hasn't really quite begun yet, but it's the Rolling Hills subdivision on South State Avenue and 8th Street Southwest. This is an R3 subdivision. I think it's actually going to be a PUD. And they're hoping to start grading there this week, actually, later this week, with the utility installation to follow immediately. Another subdivision, we've had a lot of discussion about it earlier this year, was the Dickinson Hills subdivision on the west side of the business loop. That subdivision, they've been working on the grading for the better part of this construction season. That work is almost done right now. They're looking at starting their utility installations for their water and sewer in the next two to three weeks, with streets to follow in 2015. They still are hoping in one of their lots for a hotel and a retail center, but they're still in negotiations with those developers. We've been working with Mr. Cook on his next phase of development in Cook Meadows Fifth. That project is still in the entitlement phase through planning and zoning. He has moved ahead with his engineering plans, which have been approved through the city. Right now, he's looking at trying to get 30 R1 units developed this year. His utilities for what's being called Cook Meadows Hill, Cook Meadow Hills Fifth, have been installed, and he's looking at placing the curb and gutter in the streets by September 30th of this year. One that I don't have highlighted, and I'll try and point to the right spot here, is Oliver Commons, right by the Ramada Inn. This has been approved for quite some time. They were under construction this year. They'd actually made the paper. They had got caught in that windstorm last month and had a wall get knocked over. But that construction, sounds like it's on schedule right now. Their builder plans to be finished with that on October 1st, and that's going to be open for occupancy or open for rentals by October 1st. The pink subdivision just above that is Prairie Creek. This is south of 21st Street and east of State Avenue. Prairie Creek has actively been constructing for the last, I would say, two months right now. It's a mostly R1, R2, and R3 subdivision with some commercial development. They have a total of 90 dwelling units, and they wanted to share that they do have a fudruckers that is committed to the very northwest corner of their subdivision. Their plan is to get all the utilities installed this year, and I would say probably the eastern half of the streets paved this year, with the remaining streets to be finished next year. Then we have, this is Westridge 1 out in the Roar subdivision, and Westridge 2. Right now, we've just received plans for Westridge 2, which includes a portion of, right in there, which was in Westridge 1, but was not developed with their last phase. They're just starting some grading work on that, but their planned build-out for that is to get their Phase 1 utilities installed in 2014, with the remaining utilities for that subdivision installed in 2015. Their vertical construction, their plan right now is to begin this fall and to finish in 2017. One we've all seen is the Hospital Acres subdivision, near Exit 59 and on the east side of the business loop. That project is underway. I think we're all pretty familiar with it, but the hospital's going to occupy the major portion of that. There's one block in the middle third of that subdivision, which right now doesn't have any development plans. And then the western, I'd say, third of the subdivision is some property that will most likely get developed with some commercial properties there. But the hospital has shared with me that they're on schedule for an early November opening of their medical office building, the building that first went up, with the hospital to follow shortly. And that's the updates I have of kind of most of the active construction. I hope I didn't miss any. If I did and you have a question on it, I might be able to help you out with the timeframe. But just wanted to share this with the commission and with the public. There's a lot of grading operation out there. A lot of dirt has been moved for these subdivisions, so I wanted to give all of you an update of where they're at in their construction phasing.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Kubus?
Greg, can you talk about 15th Street? And the timeframe for that will open back up.
That's a good question. I know 15th Street has been a cumbersome road closure here. It's in conjunction with our lift station 12 project that's close to 10th Avenue West. I believe that there are two, if not three, weeks left of road closure, but just have to understand, we don't have a great detour option there. It's either you have to come back on the other side of the interstate to 12th Street or go all the way up to 21st Street. We have fielded several complaints, and I myself have been caught in the trap of heading down 15th Street, having to end up turning around. So we'll look at the signing again, but if everyone can be patient with us. I know they're trying to get that work through the street done as quickly as possible. It's a very important project for us to get service up to our public safety center. So we're working on it as quickly as possible, but I do believe it'll be a few more weeks.
Any other comments or questions?
Mr. President, I have a question for Mr. Kubus. I noticed on the north end of town, I've been driving around, there's a lot of, like you said, dirt being moved. And are the developers taking the appropriate actions to, there's a lot of, with all this moisture, and a lot of the soil that's being moved, there's a lot of runoff, there's places washing out, there's overflow going into some other people's properties. Are they taking the appropriate actions to kind of mitigate, to hold some of that water? Or are they following through on what they're supposed to do in their developments up north?
Well, we have been working with, and I think you're maybe referring to one specifically, but we have been working with these developers. And really, the regulations on the stormwater and that erosion control, it's regulated by the Health Department, and they have to have a permit through the Health Department, which all of them do. They also get a grading permit or a stormwater permit from the city. Our requirements are minimal, and I know it's an enforcement action, again, that we've talked to our staff and Engineering Department. I know Mr. Corton's staff is out there looking for those types of infractions, and we've just had such an incredibly wet August, it's been difficult. But they do need to monitor their erosion control, the measures that they have up, whether it's silt fence or the straw rolls that people see around town, and check those after every half-inch rainfall. So I think we've probably had five of those in August already alone. But it is, it's been kind of a perfect storm in the sense for erosion control and silting because we do have so much ground opened up right now with these grading of the developments. And then with the amount of rain that we've received this year, it's been difficult. But we've been working with developers, trying to maintain the ponds. Some of those are city maintenance on the ponds. I know we fielded a lot of phone calls from the public about who's maintaining this structure or that structure, and we've got a hodgepodge of both, where the city maintains it and the developers, so trying to stay on top of it.
I think there's some concern out there. There's a natural flow that's being disrupted that would go into that creek, basically that feeds into 15th over there. And some of the, there's some overflow going into some private property around the area, so.
Well, I guess we take all these complaints seriously, and if we do hear of them, feel free to share them with us. We'll investigate it and take the appropriate actions.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments from Mr. Kubus? Question? Not then, you have another item that we added, that East Villard Street repairs?
I did. Mr. President, Commission, I don't know if any of you are aware, but with the large rainfall event that we had on Friday afternoon, Friday evening, Saturday morning, one of the drainage basins that ends up making it to the Hart River, close to our lagoons, had overtopped East Villard. And this is in the area of about 21st Avenue East. 21st Avenue East isn't built out there, but it's east of Base Fluke Trailers. We have a lift station out there, and it's a deep drainage. And the culvert was functioning, it was carrying water, as it should have. Just got inundated. The water had backed up, overtopped the road, and eroded out a good portion of the south side of that road embankment, probably about 15 or 20 feet deep. I've provided you an estimate. I haven't got any quotes to make this repair work, but I've came up with my own estimate of cost of roughly $100,000 to fix this. At this point, I think the appropriate action would be to design the appropriate-sized culvert and excavate out the material that's there right now, replace it with the new culvert, and build the road back up to the existing grade. Right now, the roadway is closed. It is very dangerous, and please, to the public, do not drive on this road. It's closed right now, but we've noticed tracks going around the barricades. There's quite a drop-off there. So we'll try and kind of pin that down a little bit more. But what I was looking for tonight was commission approval to move forward with an emergency repair of East Villard in the amount of approximately $104,000.
Thank you, Mr. Kubus. You've heard his report and his request. Any comments or questions?
This would not have to be a bid item at this time.
That was my reasoning for coming to the commission, so we could, I guess, circumvent the bidding process. And if we could find some contracted labor force that would have the time to do this, we really need to get this repaired and in safe condition. We have a lot of road closures around town, and this was an unexpected one.
Other comments? Would there be a motion regarding this issue?
Mr. President, I move we approve the emergency funding for the street repair on East Villard.
Second.
We have the motion, the second. Further discussion?
Just to make sure that we size it big enough, anticipating development and all.
Well, we need to look upstream and downstream here, because we have our railroad neighbors to the south immediately, so they have some, they'll have some interest in the size of our culvert there, too.
Other comments, other discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Do you have anything else, Mr. Kubus?
Nope, that's all I have. Thank you.
We'll go to community development, then. We have one item there, a rezoning petition. Mr. Corton?
Mr. President, Commissioners, the one item tonight is a rezoning petition from Ag to general commercial, medium and high-density residential for the Westridge 2nd subdivision, which is located westerly of 30th Avenue off of Westridge Drive and the extension of 15th Street West. Planted zoning commission and city staff recommend approval. This is the second reading, and there is no change from the first reading. Mr. President?
Thank you, Mr. Corton. At this time, if anyone from the public would like to comment regarding Ordinance 1558, you may do so now. Just come to the podium, state your name, we'll hear your comments. Anyone from the public? There's no one from the public that wishes to comment? Any comments or questions by Commissioners? Not, would there be a motion regarding second reading and final passage of Ordinance 1558?
Motion that we approve of Ordinance 1558.
No second.
We have the motion and the second. Any discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Decker?
Aye.
Mr. Jackson?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Altman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Brings us down to Commissioner comments or reports? Any, anything by city Commissioners? Not, is there any member from the public that would wish to address the city? If so, just come to the podium and state your name, we'll hear your comments. There's no one from the public. Chair would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Chair, a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, say nay. The motion carries. We're adjourned.